I gotta get caught up on all this stuff here. Sorry for the delay. Good evening and welcome to the Upland City Council meeting for November 10th. Madam Clerk, we have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Most.
Present.
Councilmember Breitling.
Present.
Mayor Proton Zuniga.
Present.
Mayor Veltto.
Present. All right, do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda?
No, we do not.
All right, do we have? All right, so please join us right now with Hushamani from the Middle Ground Muslim Center, and will be leading us in our invocation. I'll be followed by Chief Marcel Blanc with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand, move your hats. Hush, come on up.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, Fire Chief, Police Chief, I'll be reciting a prayer from the Bible Scripture for a blessing on our city of gracious living for the residents, business leaders, caregivers, first responders. All praise, oh my God, be to thee who art the source of all glory and majesty, of greatness and honor, of sovereignty and dominion, of loftiness and grace, of awe and power. Whomsoever thou willst, thou causes to draw nigh unto the most great ocean; and on whomsoever thou desirest, thou conferest the honor of recognizing thy most ancient name. Of all who are in heaven and on earth, none can withstand the operation of thy sovereign will. From all eternity, thou didst rule the entire creation, and thou wilt continue forevermore to exercise thy dominion over all created things. There is none other God but thee, the Almighty, the Most Exalted, the All-Perful, the All-Wise. Illumin, oh Lord, the faces of thy servants, that they may behold thee and cleanse their hearts, that they may turn unto the court of thy heavenly favors, and recognize him who is the manifestation of thyself and the dayspring of thine essence. Verily, thou art the Lord of all worlds; there is no God but thee, the unconstrained, the all-subdoing.
Thank you, Hush.
Before we begin the pledge to our nation's flag, happy 250th birthday to the United States Marine Corps. Please place your hand right over your heart, ready, eager.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May be seated.
Thank you, Hush, thank you, Chief. All right, it's got some presentations, Madam Clerk.
Our first presentation this evening is certificates of recognition to the Upland High School Pipe Band for Outstanding Showings at the European Pipe Band Championships and World Youth Pipe Band Championships in Scotland.
And so that would be, who do you want to do this with?
Oh, it's all of these?
Yeah, well, that's it, and those are from Kurt's group.
I'll read it, we'll all go down.
Okay.
I would love it, the pipe band members that are present would like to come forward up to the podium. I'm going to read a few words while you all assemble, and then I'll come down with the council and we'll hand out the certificates. The Upland High School Pipe Band proudly continues a long legacy of musical excellence for the Upland High School Highlanders. Under the direction of Martha Hall, Daniel, Tyler, Samas, Manuel, Ireland, and Andrew, the band is dedicated to teaching the art of bagpipes and drums to the youth of Upland. Just three years ago, the band did not have enough students to perform, but today they've grown to six bagpipers, five drummers, and seven new students beginning their musical journey. The band now competes successfully against adult bands and this year partnered with the Lander Pipe Band of Wyoming to perform in Scotland at the European and World Youth Pipe Band Championships. Three talented students from Glentoura High School joined the Upland High School Pipe Band for this international competition, strengthening the ensemble and showcasing the spirit of collaboration through music. Representing the city of Upland with pride, the band placed ninth at the European Championships with a third-place finish by their drum corps and 11th at the World Championships. The Upland City Council is proud to recognize and commend the Upland High School Pipe Band, along with the partnering Glendora High School students, for their exemplary performance and outstanding representation of the city of Upland at the European Pipe Band Champions and World Youth Pipe Band Championships in Scotland. The City Council also extends its sincere appreciation to the band's instructors and the leadership mentors and dedication to fostering music excellence. Can we give them a round of applause? I'm going to have the council join me.
Martha, would you or anyone else?
I think first and foremost, we'd just like to thank the city of Upland for your support. We've had, it was quite a journey for us to get to Scotland. You know, it was a three-year process of fundraising and organizing. And I'd like to say thank you to all of our donors, the parents, the family members that supported us, and all the local businesses in Upland that supported us as well. So, thank you so much.
Tell those military guys like Kirk can sneak in, nobody even saw him come in. Yeah, military intelligence helps. All right, we're gonna, we're gonna do a presentation right now, City of Upland Finance Division recognition. And Kurt, you want to come up now?
You want me to present?
Yeah, you can go first and I will after you. You know, you got rank has its privilege. I was just enlisted, guy officer.
Well, thank you, Mayor and Council and residents. It's a great honor for me to be here, and I apologize for coming in a couple minutes late here. It was actually funny because I was doing army training right before that.
There you go.
Which made me late. But the city of Upland is once again awarded, the Finance Department got awarded the, recognized for receiving the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting from the Government Finance Officers Association for the annual comprehensive fiscal report fiscal year ending June 30th, 2024. This shows that you know how to take care of your books. You're managing our residents' money well, thank you. And not because you keep asking me for money, Mr. Mayor, okay? It's because you're doing everything quite well. So, congratulations to you and your financial team and all of you for getting that prestigious award once again. And I don't know who you want me to present to, but.
Just hold on a second, I'll read mine and we'll all come down, we'll do them together.
Perfect.
Okay, we also want to present a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting from the Government Finance Officers Association. And I'm proud to share, along with the council, that the city of Upland has once again received the certificate of achievement of excellence in financial reporting from the Government Finance Officers Association for annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2024. This is the highest honor in government financial reporting and recognize our commitment to transparency, fiscal responsibility, and clear communication with our community. I want to thank our Finance Department for their hard work and professionalism. Their dedication ensures our residents can trust the public funds are managed with care and integrity. And as City Manager Michael Blay said, this recognition underscores the excellence of our city's financial management. Congratulations to our finance team. You make the entire city of Upland proud, thank you. Hey, folks, if you aren't aware of it, you'll notice that a long, stick one second. Stick around, Kurt, you gotta get some accolades right now. How many of you seen Foothill Boulevard, it's got the signs up and you've already started construction? That, the efforts of our county supervisors, most certainly Supervisor Hagman. Yeah, it was a little bit of that, but you know, Kurt was one of the guys that said, what are you guys doing? He asked us, when I asked for that $2 million, he said, tell me what you're doing. And we laid it out, and he says, I'm going to give you the $2 million. So, Kurt, thank you for holding our feet to the fire to make sure that we're doing better in our community, and that's what it takes. If we do better, we're recognized and we appreciate you because Kurt, you are one of the ones that helps make Upland a better place to call home. Thank you.
Our next presentation is a presentation by Shanay Bowman of Upland Unified School District regarding middle college high school coming to Upland.
Good evening, Mayor Veltto, council members and community. It is my honor and privilege to share some information with you about a very new and exciting opportunity that Upland Unified is venturing into. To start this conversation, we want to share the catalyst for this work, and that includes the fact that we are a declining enrollment district. And there are a lot of contributing factors to this. Population decline in general, because children aren't having, families aren't having as many children, which has resulted in declining enrollment in our school district. Also absenteeism post-COVID, so a high rate of absenteeism, and that directly impacts our funding in public schools, which has resulted in a budget deficit. And then on top of this is just competing alternatives. We're a traditional district, and so when there are competing options, such as charter schools and private schools, families will look into those options. And so we could wait and react and do what traditional districts do, which is shut down schools or innovate, and that's what we chose to do. And so our innovation plan is what we call our Vision 2030 Plan. And over the next five years, we have plans to expand innovation in our district. And some of those plans include expanding on things that we're currently doing being reimagined. So, the charter is just one of the elements, but I did want to highlight that our dual-language immersion program at Baldi View is expanding to eighth grade, and we're bringing in students from all over the region to our dual-language immersion academy. We're expanding what STEM looks like at Foothill Knowles. We're expanding options to CTE pathways, and there's going to be a fourth through eighth-grade arts academy on the Upland Junior High premises, which is opening up room for the charter school to join the south side of Upland Elementary, which is where it'll be located. We are also venturing into a sports academy where students will have access to training during their school day, athletes as young as fourth grade, a flex academy for families that are looking for a different type of school day, that's not traditional, a school of education where we'll offer teaching credentials and degrees right out of our district, which will help with the expensive cost of college and surrounding private colleges. And then last but not least, our Pathways Prep Academy Charter Middle College option. And so that option, Pathways Prep, as I mentioned, will be on the campus of Upland Elementary on the south side of the campus, and it will be a school that has 100 students, starting 100 freshmen next school year, and will add 100 students every year, and our max capacity will be 400 students. So, this will become a second high school option in the area. Upland High School is our one comprehensive high school, and there are families who've expressed interest in having a more small and intimate environment where their student's education can be more individualized. And so we are partnering with Upland Unified, and that's why our dependent charter, so that we can make sure those families stay in Upland and don't choose other options outside of the district. Some other important aspects of the school is we have three major pillars. So, we are going to be a community school, so we'll have community wraparound services available to families. So, our career center won't just be for students, but it'll be for families as well. We'll have a social worker and a psychologist on premises as well to support with family needs. We are also engaging in a model of learning called challenge-based learning. It comes out of Apple, and it's where kids are working on real-world projects in the community. So, we would like to partner with San Antonio Regional Hospital, Police Department, and make sure that the learning experiences students are having are having an impact on Upland, the region, and the world. And then last but not least, we're a middle college. So, our students will complete two years of college while they're in high school for free, partnering with Chafee, accessing online college credit courses, and on track to earn associate's degrees by the time they graduate their senior year. Something unique about us is we're going to build in travel experiences because if we want students to be leaders of the world, they need to see the world. And so their freshman year, they'll travel up the coast of California. Their sophomore year, the west coast, they'll go all the way to New York their junior year, and they'll be international travel their senior year. And this is all built into the budget, so this will not come at a cost to families. They'll also graduate with their general ed courses done for UC and Cal State schools. So, when they, if they enter either of these two types of universities, they'll already have those two years of general ed completed and be able to focus on their majors. And last area to discuss is the pathways. And so we've partnered with Chafee and looked at career options because now we have students graduating from high school, and they're equipped to go to college, but they don't quite know what they want to do. So, we want to do more career exploration early and give them the options to earn certifications so they're ready for the workforce if they don't choose to go to college or if they do choose. So, we believe it's career and college, not or. And yes, they will be in uniforms at our school. So, our students will be uniformed, and we will be working with them on what those uniforms look like. And last but not least, those social skills. We really just want to create students who are ready for the workforce and have those skills that will strengthen their competitive edge. And so at full capacity, like I mentioned, will be one school, 400 students, who are a college and career not only ready but competitive. And we will co-locate with Upland Elementary. So, on that campus, the south side will have kind of a gated section that's just for the high school, and then the north side will have the TK3. And then four, five, and six are moving over to Upland Junior right across the street. So, there'll be a hub of TK12 in that region of the city. So, that's my presentation. I am open to any questions that you may have, and thank you for this time.
Go ahead, Shannon, then I'll question, go ahead.
I just wanted to thank you for your presentation. We do get questions from the community in regards to this now that it's been out on social media and through Upland Unified School District, especially in your sponsored ad. I think it's a great pivot for the times, like you said, to be more proactive than reactive. It is interesting to hear that, I think some of the information that residents wanted to know is, they thought it was maybe 100 per grade with a 400 max. So, is it that the first year, which would start, I'm assuming fall of next year, would be 100 that start as a freshman? And then every year you'll build that as they move up through the grade?
Correct.
Okay, and then is this Upland Unified School District governed? Meaning, you're under that umbrella, so the agenda of anything for this charter school residents would manage through that?
It's semi-autonomous, so it's a dependent charter under the governance of our board, but we have a separate board that will oversee the operational decisions. So, our district board has given authority to a separate operational board.
And that is something that residents, if their parents with the students would attend for that board? Or they would go, okay?
Yeah, we'll have meetings, and there'll be like an open forum for families to be a part of that.
Okay, is there preferential or, say, priority registration for any current UUSD entering, well, actually be the junior highs to feed into the school? So, we're doing Upland resident priority over out-of-district transfers?
So, charters are public schools, so any student who enrolls, if we have space, we have to take them. But at any point that we have more students interested than we're able to accommodate, we have to do a lottery. And if we have to do a lottery, then if you are a resident of Upland, you get preferential treatment as in an extra point in the lottery.
Okay. I don't think that's it. I think that pretty much covers everything that I've seen out there has been directed at me for information beyond social media, and I appreciate that you are very responsive on social media. How would, say, a parent that is intrigued further for this information, maybe wants something more in-depth, where do they go for that information?
Yes, we have, we've been scheduling webinars every other week, and we have one coming up November 19th. But if you visit our website, you can register for any of those, they're all through December. We're going to be at the Christmas tree lighting in downtown Upland as well. We're partnering with organizations that are doing giveaways to connect with families. It's a priority for us to serve families who traditionally would not perhaps take advantage of this and maybe have children who struggle in college. So, we're really trying to make connections with those families to get access to this. So, but the website, www/pathway prep academy.org is the location to go to get all the information that's needed.
Great, thank you so much for the insight and the information and for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bowman, for coming. Question, when you mentioned the enrollment, is the priority, first priority for residents? And then anything beyond that is a lottery?
So, enrollment is open enrollment, so anyone from all over can enroll, but we only can take 100 students. So, after 100, then the preference is Upland residents. They get an actual preferential spot in the lottery. But because it's a public school, we have to enroll anyone who enrolls, and then that preference happens if the lottery has to happen.
How are Upland residents going to be made aware then of when the enrollment happens so that we don't have an influx of residents that don't live in our city coming to the school? If you look back at the history of the high school, having the student count, the population increase, it was happening because other from communities outside of Upland wanted to put their students in the Upland schools. So, we're going to be right back where we were potentially. If it's an up, it's not an Upland, if it's, if it's not an Upland school, is what you're saying. It's not an Upland school then, it's not an Upland high school. It's a high school in the city of Upland, but there is no priority to the residents of the city.
No, there is priority. What I'm clarifying is that, so it's a, it's a high school of Upland Unified School District. It's a dependent charter, so it's not independent. But all schools are open enrollment schools if they're a public school and they receive public funds. So, when, right now, we're, we have enrollment open right now, for instance. We have, we're at 50 students right now, and 30, 48 of them are Upland residents. So, only two of them are from outside of the district. But if at any point, let's say 105 students try to register, then we have to do the lottery. When we do that lottery, Upland residents will get extra points in order to be chosen to go to that school, so they will have preferential treatment.
I have a better way to understand, not going to explain it better.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
No problem.
Secondly, the school, I notice it's all about, it's not about, there's no trade schools. There's not a lot of trade being offered in this, in these charter schools, is there?
Traditionally, no, and that's why we are partnering with, because Chafee has lots of trades they offer. They have a real estate certification. So, for instance, this year, we had a student from Upland High graduate with her license to sell property at the age of 18. There's a lot of trade opportunities certificates for job courses. And so we're, we're doing what's called integration between the offerings to get certifications, to get jobs right away, along with college. Because right now, you'll see traditional conversations around, are they going to college or are they going to the workforce? And our conversation is they can have both. They can get college credit, but then they also should be prepared to go into the workforce if they would like. So, we're having that dual conversation.
My, a lot of my conversations with the school district have been about the trades such as carpentry, drywalling, plumbing, electrical. Because a lot, when I speak at the high school every year, I ask, how many of you students going to go to college? And I don't get as many hands being raised. I'll ask, how many are looking, mostly I'm going to go get a job. And I think a lot of students have been discouraged because of the prices of the schools and universities in California. It's great that you can come out with a, with an AA at a high school. It seems like most of those are AP classes.
At the high school, they are. At the, when they are enrolled in dual enrollment, both at Upland High School and this charter, those are college credit courses, not AP courses. So, when they pass it, they don't have to take a test.
That's that, that's 100, okay?
Yes.
When I'm looking at a population of a school that's 3,000, potentially with 1,000 seniors, so I only got 10% potentially could come out of there. Now, we got that 90% are either going to have to go, going to go to college on their own, find a way to pay for it, or the parents, or they're going to look at the military, or they're going to look at some sort of trade. And I really want to impress upon the schools how important the trades are becoming because we have lack of people. You mentioned real estate, that's what I do. So, we have a lack of tradesmen in the industry to build. And I would like to see that somehow become, you know, back to the way it was when I was in high school. We had auto shop, we had wood shop, we had metal shop. You know, now I know that Chafee has, does have a air conditioning and heating HVAC school.
Yes.
Got to take it a step farther, and I hope that you're able to bring that back to the, I've talked to the superintendent, they all know my feeling about that.
Yeah.
Even Dr. Shannon knows how I feel about all this.
Yes, we don't disagree, and we actually are in the process of hiring an HVAC teacher for next year. And we'll have HVAC construction, and we have welding right now. So, we are in the process of building a mini trade center. What we could do a better job is advertising so that the families in the community know all of the traits that are available at Upland High School.
No, and I appreciate you just saying that. It's all about the community and from what I gathered. When Shannon speaks up about someone does, is on social media, she's on social media, she knows what's going on. Again, thank you for coming, and this is just such overwhelming to think that we're able, we're at this point now in school, so much different from when I was in high school 50 years ago.
Can I make up my remark? If you haven't considered doing our Upland Today magazine, which goes to every postal customer in the city, you might want to look into that for 2026 through the Recreation Department.
Okay, thank you.
Maybe even see if there's room for what size ad. And that way you have a touch base point that at least went into every home within our city to educate them. If they've missed the enrollment line, maybe it would be something for the next year's enrollment or education for the public.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Sure.
Thanks for coming, really appreciate you doing this.
Absolutely, thanks.
Our next presentation is a proclamation declaring Saturday, November 29th, 2025, a Small Business Saturday, accepted by Historic Downtown Upland Merchants Association and Upland Chamber of Commerce.
Okay, the city of Upland proudly celebrates our local small businesses and the vital role they play in strengthening our economy and community. Nationwide, small businesses make up 99.7% of all firms with paid employees and have created over 61% of net new jobs since 1995. When we shop small, 68%, I'm sorry, 68 cents of every dollar stay in our local community, feeling additional growth and local spending. In 2023, nearly 60% of US consumers aware of Small Business Saturday supported small, independently owned retailers and restaurants. Upland stands with local businesses that create jobs, drive our economy, and preserve the unique character of our community, encouraging everyone to shop local this Small Business Saturday. The city of Upland proclaims November 29th, 2025, a Small Business Saturday and urges the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and shop small throughout the year. And I have two proclamations for you, one for each. You guys want to join me down there for a picture?
Let's go down, thank them. By the way, yeah, thank you, Chamber and all these small businesses in Upland. We enjoy yous, we appreciate yous, we like what you do for our community. And I think just about every one of yous are involved with our Shop Upland, so that's really cool. Mar, we got a picture in the middle here. Marv, we got a picture in the middle here. All right. City Attorney. Are we done with them? We got them all, did we?
We got them.
All right, City Attorney.
Mayor, Members of the Council, we had no closed sessions, there is no report on closed sessions.
All right, Madam Clerk, Court of Communications.
This is time for any member of the public to comment on any item listed or not listed on the agenda. Anyone wishing to address the legislative bodies requested to submit a speaker card to the city clerk at or prior to speaking. Public comments and questions for the purpose of hearing current matters of concern in our community in an open venue is encouraged. However, under the provisions of the Brown Act, the city council is prohibited from discussion of items not listed on the agenda, and therefore, all comments will be taken under advisement for consideration in appropriate response or discussion at a later time. Speakers are requested to keep their comments to no more than three minutes. Speakers will be given five minutes during the public hearing. I have four speaker cards. First is Jim Thomas, followed by Christopher Cruz.
Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem, Members of the City Council and staff. First of all, I'd like to give a hearty congratulations to our Upland Pipe Band. I was a little disappointed to see him in street clothes, but that being said, tomorrow, if anybody is interested, there is the Veterans Memorial right out here in the Veterans Plaza, and they will be in full uniform and have their instruments. So it'd be good to look forward to that. On another note, I would like to make you aware of the Upland Interfaith Council's upcoming Prayer Breakfast. For 30 years now, the Upland Interfaith Council has been sponsoring this very symbolic and meaningful prayer event. The Upland Interfaith Council's main purpose is to build bridges of understanding. We currently have active membership representing Christians, Jews, Muslims, Baha'i, and pagan philosophies. We have previously had members of the Zoroastrian, Buddhist, Hindu, Sikh, and North American spirituality. We have been meeting for, weekly for the past 30 years, and we have discovered that we can all be in the same room at the same time and learn and respect each other's differences. We have also discovered that we have much more in common than we have that which separates us. One of those basic things that we have in common is that we all believe in prayer. We pray for our leaders and for Upland's success in continuing as the city of gracious living. This Thursday morning, we are having our 30th Annual Prayer Breakfast at the San Antonio Regional Hospital. This is a beautiful opportunity to truly enjoy and participate in diversity at its best. If anyone is interested and wants more information or wish to purchase a ticket, look me up. Thank you very, very much.
Jim, for that breakfast, that's this Thursday, right?
This Thursday, correct.
This Thursday or next?
This.
This?
Yeah, four days from now.
Okay, so you can pay a ticket at the door, right?
I've got yours, I think.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. But you can pay it at the door again.
You know what, it's a good move there. All right. Go ahead.
Next is Christopher Cruz, followed by John Glenn.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, City Council members and city staff. My name is Chris Cruz. I've called Upland home for the past two and a half decades and now serve on the Upland Unified School Board of Education. I just wanted to take time today to, to express my gratitude to you all. One, for recognizing our Pipe Band at the Upland High School, and two, for allowing Dr. Bowman to present on Pathways Prep Academy. I do hope our families here in Upland consider that option for their education, as well as continue to consider our public school options across Upland Unified. I also want to take a moment to express my gratitude for your continued support of our residents, especially during these times of uncertainty. I know some council members have compiled and distributed information on food resources, and I greatly appreciate that. I'll also remind everyone and our community members that Upland Unified continues to provide free breakfast, lunch, and supper for our students across our campuses, and I hope that all students are encouraged to participate and partake in those meals. And then finally, I'll just say that I appreciate our collaboration more broadly on, on a number of issues. And I very much thank you all for, for collaborating with Upland Unified. It is when we work together that we can continue to make Upland a city of gracious living, and it's due to your hard work and collaboration with us that we continue to make it that. So thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Chris, appreciate you stopping in.
Next is John Glenn, followed by Natasha Walton.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, City Council. My name is John Glenn. I grew up in Upland, went to Upland Schools, taught at Upland High School for 29 years, played bass for 25 years at the Upland Presbyterian Church, and I live in Rancho Cucamonga. You may remember, I think maybe, I was here in March to complain and kind of whine about Bank of America and their dumpsters. And I told you back in March that, just like Mary Poppins, when the wind changes, I will be back. And the wind has changed, the Santa Anas are back, and unfortunately, nothing has changed in the Bank of America parking lot. Dumpsters are still sitting there, they are unchained, not locked up, and the wheels are not locked. I was up there Sunday morning, just yesterday morning, to check, to see if anything had changed, and I could move, I could push one of the dumpsters with one hand across the parking lot, nothing has changed. So my concern is, because they haven't done anything about this, that this is going to happen again. When that dumpster rolled last January, it did $7,500 worth of damage to my wife's car. And I told you back then, Bank of America, it took no responsibility for it. As far as they were concerned, their response was it was a 70 mile an hour gust of wind that moved the dumpster. And when it came in, in March, I was asking about, you know, if Bank of America had any kind of waiver or any kind of exemption, and it was the city council members told me, or some of your staff told me, no, they do not, that they're supposed to be following this. And my concern is, I mean, one of two things. Number one, this is going to happen again. Is this going to keep happening until they get this thing done? Because people park in that parking lot, the wind blows, and that dumpster moves, and it's going to keep on happening. And I hope, hopefully, when it does happen again, it doesn't do any more damage than it did, that it doesn't hurt somebody else. Or it affects somebody who doesn't have the same kind of car insurance I had, because this thing cost me $1,000 out of pocket. It could be worse for somebody else, it could be worse for somebody in this community who has, you know, who's struggling financially because of the economic condition that the country's in right now. You know, it could be a air traffic controller from Ontario Airport that's been laid off, that doesn't have the money to pay for this out of pocket expenses. So I'm hoping that you can, you know, I want to thank Upland for the support, because I've had regular communications with Dalton, he lets me know what's going on and the progress that's being made. But I really hope that you would, that you would really continue to put the pressure on them so that this doesn't, so that this doesn't keep happening. And I also want to say, my daughters, or I asked you to put the pressure on them because they're worried about their dad obsessing on this one, because this is turning me into the old guy sitting on the porch yelling at everybody that's walking down the street, because this has become an obsession and they want it to stop. And so on behalf of my daughters, will you please keep the pressure on Bank of America so I don't have to come, come back in here and yell about Bank of America anymore? So thank you, thank you very much for your time. And if I may, one more thing, if you are an Upland High School student, Mrs. Glenn told me to tell you hello. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next is Natasha Walton.
Good evening, Upland Mayor and City Council. I'm Natasha Walton, a Parks Advocate in the city of Upland, and I've been up here before. And I'm, I'm just wanted to talk about item 10, one, I'm 10, 10I. And it, I'm very happy to hear that they're going to be moving forward with a master plan for open space and parks in Upland, so thank you for that. I just had a couple of recommendations, a couple, you know, questions as well. So I'm just going to go through the list. One, I just asked for it to please provide extensive outreach with all those in the community. I mean, not just, you know, special events, but maybe going door to door, talking to people maybe you don't normally talk to regarding parks, maybe people live in the apartments who don't have any park, they don't have any kind of yard space in their houses or where they're living. And it looks like fortunately, there's, there are going to be some plans to do some outreach. I saw, looked at the schedule, so please make sure it's really extensive. And number two, please ensure that this planning process complies with the California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA. The latest park and open space plan elements were completed under an environmental impact report under the general plan in 2015, I have participated in that. And so I'm just wondering if they're going to do a supplemental EIR, or maybe another CEQA document to ensure public involvement. And that's what CEQA is for. CEQA is to get people involved, to get public input, and to do it in a process where everybody has a chance to put their comments in. And number three, please ensure that, let me get back to my picture thing here, please ensure that some overall plans include the undeveloped Sycamore Park that we've been talking about a couple of years ago. You know, we had people who were more advocating for an open park area for that, some people were looking at a more sports park, and other people wanted both. And so if we can get some, you know, some ideas on that, there's supposed to be $80,000 that was allocated for that plan, and so I'd like to, we'd like to be able to see that. Number four, please ask for feedback from residents regarding how they would like to use the park in more general terms and not just specific amenities. For example, please ask residents how much of their neighborhood parks would they like as areas for open play versus specialized fields that maybe only certain groups can have access to. People may not realize for, that another sports field could take away from their picnic areas. And just an example is, a couple of months ago, I believe, at Greenbelt Park, the city had asked, hey, what do you want in your park? And they had lists of things, and one of them was a parking lot. And nobody put down open space, but a lot of people checked off the parking lot. But maybe people don't realize that, hey, yeah, more parking can be good, but does that mean we're going to lose a field for playing to build that parking lot? Or is it going to be along the streets? So maybe more of a general idea of what we want in our parks may be better, so we can tailor the amenities to those items. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Natasha, appreciate it. Comments always.
The remaining speaking cards are for the public hearing, and I'll call those speakers at that time.
All right, so we have a consent calendar and a couple items, we're going to be pulling item I. And we're also going to table item H for further review by staff. So item H is not going to be discussed, it's been tabled, and item I has been pulled. So can I get a motion? Any others being pulled? Hearing none, we'll just go, motion for item 10A, B, C, D, E, F, G, and J.
I'll move.
So moved by Councilmember, Ma, second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilmember Garcia, let's vote. And that passed unanimously, let's move on now to item I. We have a presentation, understand for that?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council. We have a brief PowerPoint presentation that outlines this item. So just to introduce the item briefly, is a Parks and Open Space Master Plan is essentially a critical process that shapes the future of all our open spaces, green spaces, parks, park facilities, ensuring that they meet the needs of our community while offering long-term social and economic benefits, as well as recreational benefits, really looking at not just what we need today, but well into the future and how we utilize limited resources of funding. I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Jessica Escoto, who is going, our Parks and Recreation Manager, who's going to go over a brief PowerPoint for your review tonight. And hopefully through that process, we'll be able to answer some questions, so.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Veltou and Council. Tonight I'll be taking a few minutes to share the purpose behind developing the city of Upland's first Parks and Open Space Master Plan, and share the approach that we'll be taking with RHA landscape architects and planners. At its core, this plan will serve as a strategic, data-driven framework that guides the future development, enhancement, and long-term sustainability of the city's parks, recreation facilities, open space, programs, services, and partnerships. In other words, it's a roadmap, helping us to make thoughtful, informed decisions about how to best manage and improve the parks and recreation opportunities our community values so deeply. Just as important, the plan will be shaped by community engagement. We will be connecting with residents, local organizations, and key stakeholders through meetings, workshops, and surveys to ensure the plan reflects Upland's unique needs and priorities. The community's input will guide us in understanding what's working well, where there are opportunities for improvement, and what new ideas or amenities the community would like to see in the future. The plan will include a comprehensive assessment of our current parks and recreation system, understanding what we have today and where the gaps exist. From there, it identifies the community needs and priorities, ensuring that future investments reflect what residents value most. The plan also evaluates our organizational and financial resources, helping align with what's possible and what's needed. Based on that foundation, it recommends actionable strategies that balance community needs with available resources. Importantly, this plan will guide staff on how to best utilize the over $11 million in restricted park and open space funds, setting clear priorities and goals and objectives. And finally, having a comprehensive master planned document will strengthen the city's position when pursuing state, federal, and other grant or earmark opportunities, ultimately improving our chances of success and bringing more resources into Upland's parks and open spaces. To ensure we selected the most qualified team to lead this important effort, the city conducted a competitive and transparent selection process. We began using, we, excuse me, we began by issuing a request for proposals for professional services to firms with experience in parks and recreation and open space planning. Proposals were evaluated based on several key criteria, including each firm's experience with similar master plans, the qualification and diversity of their project team, and the strength of their proposed approach to community engagement and long-term planning. It's important to note that for professional services, staff is not required to select the lowest bidder. Instead, as a common municipal best practice, selection is based on qualifications and alignment with the city's goals and visions. In addition to cost, the city evaluated the firm's capacity to perform the scope of services, their community outreach strategies, and the overall submission quality. After a thorough review, top-ranked firms were invited to interviews with a selection panel made up of city staff and representatives from relevant departments. These interviews provided an opportunity to better understand each firm's project vision, communication style, and ability to collaborate and collaborate effectively with staff and the community. Following this evaluation, RHA landscape architects and planners were selected to develop the city's Parks and Open Space Master Plan. RHA was chosen for their extensive experience in park and recreation master planning, their collaborative team approach, which includes next practice partners, and their methodology that aligns closely with the city of Upland's mission, vision, and community values. Their proposal and presentation demonstrated a clear understanding of Upland's goals, and their approach will help to ensure the final plan is both innovative and achievable, providing a strong foundation for the city's park and open space system moving forward. As part of their proposal, RHA provided a detailed work plan outlining the process they will be following to develop the city's Parks and Open Space Master Plan. And while I won't read all 19 steps this evening, I do want to ensure that all, that the work plan is comprehensive and covers the key components necessary to create a thoughtful, data-driven, and community-informed plan. It includes tasks such as conducting a thorough inventory and assessment of our existing parks, facilities, and programs, engaging the community and stakeholders through surveys, workshops, and meetings, performing a detailed data analysis to understand the current conditions and future needs, evaluating organizational and financial resources, and developing actionable strategies and implementation priorities to, to guide future investment and decision-making. The work plan also includes regular check-ins and milestones with city staff to ensure the alignment at every phase of the project. Overall, this is a well-structured and strategic roadmap that will help ensure the final master plan is both comprehensive and achievable, setting a strong foundation for the future of Upland's Parks and Open Space System. One of the most important components of developing the Park and Open Space Master Plan is the public outreach and community engagement strategy. This process ensures the plan reflects the voices of the entire Upland community through the, through an approach that is both inclusive and accessible. It includes, excuse me, it includes an ADA, accessible digital platform, stakeholder and focused group interviews, and broad multilingual outreach. Along with RHA, we will be hosting public workshops in each district, attend community events such as the upcoming egg hunts for the adults and kids, the Earth Day event, and the Irish and Lemon Festivals. Additionally, the plan includes youth and teen engagement opportunities to reach younger residents, as well as senior engagement through events at the Gibson Senior Center. To gather a measurable input, RHA will also conduct a statistically valid survey, an electronic survey, to ensure that everyone has had a chance to be heard. Together, these efforts will create community-driven plan that truly represents Upland's diverse voices and values. The development of the Park and Open Space Master Plan will be a focused, efficient process designed to balance quality with timely completion. The project is, is expected to take approximately nine months from start to finish, allowing sufficient time for data collection, analysis, community engagement, and plan development. To ensure the flexibility, we've built in a not-to-exceed buffer of 12 months, giving the city and the consultant team room to adapt if additional outreach coordination or review is needed. Throughout this process... Throughout this process, we'll maintain consistent communication with staff, stakeholders, and the community, with key milestones, including the assessment of current conditions, public engagement phases, draft development, and ultimately, the presentation of the final master plan for adoption. The structured timeline keeps the project on track while ensuring that every phase is thorough, transparent, and community-informed. And this concludes my presentation. We do have RHA's president, Mr. Doug Grove, in the audience, and Damian and I are also available to answer any questions that the council may have.
All right, Councilmember Miles.
Okay, first of all, thank you for the presentation. I think that this is an exciting time that we're bringing this forward. I remember, I don't know, over three years ago or so, and the subject was approached, and I was avidly against it, only because I felt that we didn't have the fiscal funding aligned, and now we do. So I think this definitely will ensure there is no error by community engagement about what we want in the parks. I'm actually really interested to see the outcome of this, if it matches what I think the pulse of the community wants versus what the data is collected in the community shows. So I think that that will be a great opportunity for, for all of us to learn as we go out to do something like this. I think it's well worth the money. I read the 38-page proposal twice, very intrigued by it and all of its elements and components. It's going to bring something forward that ensures that, you know, all of our parks, that when, you know, for such a long time, weren't sure how much money we have, and somewhere around $11 million, but standing out more so with the vendor opportunity is their ability, expertise, and experience of getting maybe matching funding and grant funding, something that internally, right now, we don't have the wherewithal on maybe a staff level. So this kind of shores that gap. So I think that this is properly placed for the right time, and looking forward to getting more movement and growth within our parks. So I applaud you for that, and I thank you for the creativity and the idea to move it forward. Thank you.
Rudy, go ahead.
I too want to thank you for this, but I do have a question for our attorney. We previously created a master plan for Memorial Park, which we were litigated by a resident over. Although we prevailed, it did come at quite a hefty cost to the city to defend. So what can we do to prevent future litigation? Like, what's, is there, are there things we could put into this?
Nope.
It's difficult to say when, you know, we did prevail last time. Obviously, we, the court found that we did the appropriate CQ analysis for that plan. At this stage of the proceedings, all you're doing is adopt, you know, approving a contract to start the process. When the plan's prepared and comes back, we'll obviously work with staff and with a consultant to make sure the appropriate level of CQ review is done at that time, and once again, we'll present that to the council, and we trust that that will stand up should the city be challenged again.
Okay. And for staff, is there any way we can have more community outreach events, more than five? I want to get as many as we can, you know?
Yeah, we can definitely see what the schedule would look like. We are trying to keep this to that nine-month period, and so when we have our first kickoff meeting, probably the first week of December, we'll go ahead and make sure that our consultant understands that we want to get as much outreach as possible, whether it's more than just the community workshops, those five, but also attending, you know, opening day ceremonies of Little Leagues and things like that, and really, really getting into the community.
The outreach, the outreach is very important.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Jessica, and your team for this presentation. Great job. Very thorough. Yes, go ahead.
I'm sorry. Thank you. The, thank you for the presentation. Greatly appreciate it. The, I think we all appear saying the same thing, that the community engagement is by far the most important step that we want to make sure we exhaust all avenues. Is there a way that for the surveys, I believe you said that they were, they would be conducting surveys and gathering data, if we could create a system where it's a QR code, and we have, like, at each one of our parks, a station that, why not talk to the people that actually use the parks? That it could utilize those that are, that are visiting the parks and using them to engage them in these questions? Would that be okay?
Absolutely. In my prior agency, we did exactly just that with respect to engagement to get that data. So we will absolutely be looking at using the latest technology and availability to capture all that information from our residents.
Great, thank you.
All right. Again, thank you. Appreciate it. Great effort. I know that it's going to be a roadway ahead of us, and hopefully with the community engagement that the group is not the same people at every one. And that's what I think they're getting at, is finding other ways to get information. I don't know if we have the ability to go door-to-door because of the costs, but we will make sure that we get out and do a little more community engagement.
Mayor, can I make one comment real quick? Is this also going to go maybe in front of the Public Works Committee or our Advisory Committee as well, too? Are they going to be part of this process?
We have it scheduled to go in front of the Public Works Committee as a document for consideration, once we have essentially a draft product before we take it to the city council to get their recommendation.
Thank you.
All right. Go ahead. Councilmember Miles, go ahead.
Thank you.
Just as, I was thinking, as we're all brainstorming really quick, and I wanted to thank the, our school board member for being here. Have we ever thought of possibly maybe creating a flyer to have the kids take home with them?
Yes, we will. Student engagement is going to be part of the process.
Thank you.
That's what I was going to mention. If the consultant is here and he wants to speak to what the community, no, engagement would look like.
I don't even think you know how community engagement would look like yet until we get a little farther into seeing what we can do. But, I mean, if he wants to say, but.
In your, in your experience, and when we've had previous outreach and workshops, we've had sometimes minimal turnout, so with your experience, what could you bring to us to make sure that all stakeholders and that you're not getting the same people, or there's only five people attending? How are you going to overcome that hurdle? Is it going to be on the city's side to let you know the information? Are you going to bring something to us for that?
Well, from the city's standpoint, we're going to rely on you to give us who you know are the leaders and the key stakeholders in the group. And from that point on, we'll take that, and we will do the typical community meetings, which we'll get who we get. We also have QR codes that we get to all the events. We hand it to schools. They can be in multi-language. The website we have is available in 82 different languages by the click of it, so they can see the information there. We have the mail-out survey. We have the online survey. We will make sure that we get, you know, through working with staff and through all of you who know who the community is, we'll make sure we get our, the word out to everybody. And the QR code has really become the key to that. That all gets compiled into getting the mail-out survey that goes out to the city as well. So we'll do it, we'll do whatever we can. It's our goal to get the best community outreach that we can possibly do. That's always our goal, so.
Thank you for that. Thank you for being present this evening.
You bet. No problem. Thank you.
I'll move the item.
Motion to approve the item. Motion to approve item I, second by Councilmember Zuniga. All right, that passed unanimously also. Let's move on now to the, let's see, we got, let me get to it here. Now we have public hearing. Madam Clerk.
Item 11A, the city council will conduct a public hearing to consider establishing a residential parking permit zone on Spinnaker Way, and that will be presented by our Development Services Director, Robert Dahlquist.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Harry Parr, our, one of our engineers in land development, will be giving you a brief presentation. And Al and I, Harry, we're all here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mayor and city council. This item is to adopt a resolution establishing a permit parking zone on Spinnaker Way. The, our current policy is the municipal code, section 10.44.010, authorizes city council to designate certain streets as perking, permit parking zones for the benefit of residents living adjacent to those streets. Residents in such zones can purchase parking permits from the Development Services Department for $10 each after providing proof of residence. And this on the screen is an example of the sticker that we issue for, for residents upon providing proof of residence. We issue up to three per household of these stickers. We can also issue up to two visitor passes, which are good for a year. It's kind of an overview of our current policy. Spinnaker Way, we, we received a petition on June 17, 2025, that was signed by 13 of the 14 residents living on Spinnaker Way. The residents claimed to have experienced frustration with apartment residents parking along Spinnaker, blocking access to the mailboxes, street sweepers, and trash pickup. Staff conducted an investigation, found that there is unusually high demand for street parking on Spinnaker. We found that due to our own observations, as well as reports from residents, that this street does meet the criteria outlined in the municipal code to be designated as a permit parking zone. So this is the location we're talking about, circled in red. And that Spinnaker Way is located at the northeast corner of 8th Street and Benson Avenue. It's cul-de-sac. And you could see, also see apartments just south of 8th Street, which those apartments do have onsite parking for the residents. We did also consider including Genoa Way, which is that blue-shaded area, another cul-de-sac just next to Spinnaker, in the parking zone. However, those residents were generally not experiencing the same issues, and a majority were not in favor of the permit parking. We did send out a survey to the residents on Spinnaker and Genoa Way. We had six responses to our survey from residences, residents on Genoa Street. Three were in favor, and three were not in favor. The ordinance requires that a majority of residents must be in favor to move forward with this. So that concludes the presentation. We're happy to answer any questions, and we'd also like to open the floor to residents who would like to speak on this.
Okay. Let's do this. Let's hold the public hearing, and then we'll go from there. So the public hearing, so we have speakers?
I do. I have Natalie Garrett, followed by Carrie Alcott.
Hello, city council, and mayor, and committee members. My name is Natalie Garrett. Thank you. Natalie Garrett, I do live on Spinnaker Way. I have the unfortunate position on Spinnaker Way to be the closest one to 8th Street. So I'm on the corner, my front door faces 8th Street, and then my garage faces Spinnaker Way. And we do have a huge problem with parking, because it's a small cul-de-sac, and there's 14 residences, and maybe about 15 to 16 parking spaces on the street, with some of those just totally blocking mailboxes if you're parking on them. So I don't even count those as parking spaces, but they technically are. So it's gone, I've been, we've been there for like 24 years, but it's, it's just really been the, maybe about the last 10 years that have been so bad. The residents over across at Stone Ridge Apartments prefer to park in our cul-de-sac instead of on 8th Street or instead of in their complex, because they feel like it's safer for their vehicle, which, I don't know. I've known one person has their vehicle broken in two times, so I'm not sure that it's safer, but they prefer to park there. There's parking on 8th Street, there's parking in their complex, but they still prefer to park on Spinnaker Way. One of the things we've had to do is put up signs on our mailboxes, because for a while, for an entire year, we didn't get mail delivery, because they don't allow, or actually, they told me they don't allow the mail carriers to go around a car to, because they could get, they could, you know, kind of fall on the curb or whatever, but then it just really depends on the carrier themselves. So sometimes we get mail delivery when our mailbox is blocked, and sometimes we don't. But it was really rough for that one year that we weren't getting mail delivery. And I think that was during the pandemic, so the cars were literally not moving. People at the apartment complex do tend to park there long-term. And what I mean for long-term, it's a long time if you're parked in front of somebody's mailbox for an entire week. I mean, you can call the police after the three days, and then they have to come out and mark it, and then you have to wait three more days before you call them again, and then you just start the same old thing the next week with another person. I've left, I don't know, hundreds of notes on cars to please not block the mailbox. We have signs, they don't, they don't care. They just block it. And, and then we have to put our trash cans out on the, on weekends, because Monday morning, 6:00 a.m. is our pickup. So the people who come in on Thursday or Friday and don't need their car all weekend long, they park there, and we can't put our trash cans out. Or if we're lucky to put our trash cans out, they'll move them so that they can park there. I had one guy move my, my trash cans with his vehicle. He smashed them all together. Do you think Burt Tech is going to pick up my trash if they're smashed altogether? And they're A, not supposed to be within five feet of a car, and then they each are supposed to have at least one foot in between them, or they won't pick them up. So it's just like a chronic problem. So we, when I talk to my neighbors, I assume that I was the most frustrated one, because I'm at the end of the block where they just pull in and park. But every single person, except for the one that was brand-new to our block at the time, is, was really frustrated. And I was like, why didn't we do this before? I didn't realize so many people were frustrated. So if you guys could help us by voting for this parking permit zone, we would really appreciate it, and thank you so much for your help.
Thank you, Natalie.
Next is Carrie Alcott.
Good evening, Mayor, city council. My name is Carrie Alcott. I live on Genoa Way. I originally voted against the permitting. I do feel that something needs to be done, but I got a few points that I'm concerned about that I want to talk about. One, if the permitting is permitted for Spinnaker Way, that those cars that are parking there now end up over on Genoa Way, or everything east of that. So we're just moving the problem right down the way. The problem that I have with permitting is, puts a burden on the residents for accommodating our visitors. Sometimes at Christmas time, I'll have five or six cars out there that are visitors. You're only allowing a few. That means we're going to have a problem. Where are we going to put our visitors when they come to visit us? We have a neighbor that a lot of times on Sundays, they have family church events where they come over and celebrate, and there's quite a few more cars than that. So it would put quite a burden on us with having permitted parking there in our street. The added expense and the hassle of getting the permits, if I have somebody like my mom that might come over once a week versus somebody that might, we see might, once a year, we got to run out and now get a permit form. So it creates a little bit of a problem. The other thing I didn't like about permitting is, is this going to open up the tow trucks policing our streets to pick up cars that aren't permitted? I used to live in an apartment complex, well, not apartment, a condo complex, an HOA, where that was a problem with, you know, illegal parking or parking without permitting. So some of the questions I have on maybe other solutions is, why is there no parking on Benson Avenue above 8th Street? I didn't see anything posted there not park, no parking allowed, but nobody ever parks there. So why isn't that open for parking? Something to maybe look at. What about the apartment complexes themselves, as far as policing their own areas? Are there any abandoned cars that they're not moving out that's taking up these parking spaces? Another thing is even on our streets around Upland, around the apartment complexes, if there's any abandoned cars out there. Now, I've actually experienced a stolen vehicle get dropped off in front of my house. So I know that's possible, that, you know, who's checking on those vehicles out there? Are they legal? Are they supposed to be there, or are they abandoned, taking up spaces? Can we make the apartment complex maybe a little more responsible? Are they overpopulating their rentals? In other words, are there more than just a couple of people living in an apartment? Or are there, you know, large amounts of families where there's more than one or two cars per apartment, which could be cars per apartment, which could be overpopulating? And then the last thing that I wanted to bring up is, what about getting the apartment complexes to be a little more responsible in improving their own property to allow more parking? In other words, do they have a grass area inside on their property that they may be, be able to turn into parking to help free that up? So thank you for your time. Those are just my comments.
All right, thank you. Any others?
No additional speakers.
Any other speakers before we close the public hearing? All right, we'll close the public hearing. All right. I actually brought up the issue with the vehicles now being pushed east. I'm, I'm not against Spinnaker having permits, not at all. If the residents on that street prefer to have it, that's fair by as far as I'm concerned. I'm more concerned now, Carrie, what's going to happen on your street? As far as the apartment owners, we really can't go to the apartment owners and, and do any kind of enforcement. There's certain, you know, they have certain rights as a property owner also, just like you do. But as far as abandoned cars, our police department is very, very keenly aware of what goes on in our community in that area. If there's, if there is, if there's no signs along Benson that say no parking, is that what you're saying? There's no signs that say no parking there?
I didn't see any.
And they could park there?
Yes.
Okay. You're going to find people are going to go the least past of, least path of resistance. And I think, Carrie, you're going to be back in here in a few months wanting Genoa to have parking permits, because all it's going to do is push them all the way over, even onto the other streets. The only way you're going to prevent it from, from happening is if parking permits. Do it by Upland High School, am I correct, chief? They do it by Upland High School, parking permits only? That's what we had to do over the years. The apartments are, there's guidelines for how many people can live in those apartments and rooms. There's no way for the city to police every unit. There could be, you know, a, a family of, of two, you know, six drivers in a three-bedroom. So you'd have six vehicles. That could happen. Not much we can do about it. As far as permits, you'd get, I think we mentioned you could have three, was it three we heard? Three plus?
Yeah, three stickers and two guest passes.
Okay, if they needed to come in for some special event, could they come to the city then and ask for some special disposition, just for that weekend or for a few days? Would they be allowed to do that?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay, so there would be something, Carrie, but I would, Carrie, I'd encourage you, that's why I brought it up to the city today. I did, I called in to said, listen, it's going to happen. So I don't know if we can do that. We can make an adjustment right now if, if you think your neighbors on Genoa are going to want it. I would encourage you to talk to them, get back to us right away, because if we're going to have to put signs up to prevent this, it's going to happen. And I can only see it going farther and farther east into the residential neighborhoods. It's, it is a problem in our state, parking, that you can blame on Sacramento. They took away the, the amount of, many parking space you had to have per resident. They took that away. Am I right? Bob, where's Bob?
Mayor, I'm hiding behind the diaphragm.
I'm right, didn't they? Some of the Senate?
Well, the, they passed a legislation that if you're within a half mile of a transit center, part, we can't require parking.
Right.
So they've, part of taking away local control.
Okay, so Carrie, a lot of it's because they've taken away local control from us. We want, we want to be good neighbors. I know you want to be good neighbors, but when you can't get your mail, and you can't take your trash cans, it happens in a lot of areas of the city, not just around apartments. We have it happen in some of the other areas of this community. Like I say, North Upland, we have those same kind of problems, where you get so many vehicles where you can't even, you have to tell your neighbors, hey, listen, can you do me a favor? Not on Wednesday mornings, could you not park your cars right here? I got to put my trash cans out. So over time, but I know that these are not your neighbors doing it. These are people that live across the street in the apartments. And so, any other comments? James?
Thank you, Mayor. I just had two questions. One, for the existing, tonight we're just asking for your area, the Genoa's area is a separate conversation, correct?
Yes.
Okay. For the area we're talking about, is there a way to, in addition to this, can we, is there a way to designate where the mailbox, the centralized mailbox are located? Can we put a red curb there so nobody parks there?
Is it a central mailbox, or you have them in front of your homes?
They're individual?
They're individual.
Not, and since, like, we, we tried to talk to the park, the post office about that, but not everybody was in agreement.
See? Yeah.
Like, central mailboxes get broken into a lot.
That's right.
Okay.
They take them.
Then my next comment would be, for the other street, would it be possible, perhaps, even though I know you've already sent out the mailer and the ballots pretty much?
They can incorporate it tonight.
Can, right, but my recommendation is, could we do a, for that area, a community meeting? Because I'm?
I just, I just asked Carrie to do that.
Oh, did I miss that part?
I just asked them, Carrie, I asked Carrie to do that, talk to?
Oh, I was talking to staff, though. That's why I was asking, like, if that could be something that we implement as part of the process, because we didn't do that for theirs. But that's, I think, I think that's a key component in, when we designate, go through this process, to have a community meeting for those that are impacted, just a mail ballot with a letter. Incorporating, I think, that community opportunity to engage?
Isn't that what you guys did? You guys did send out something to Genoa.
That's correct.
Yeah, they did.
No, they mailed, yes, but didn't hold a meeting. I'm saying, if you have a meeting to discuss what the questions are and the concerns from the community are, then I think you'll get a better, more than just six people voting.
We can approach the residents on Genoa, it's also 14 homes. But when staff looked at this, they also looked at Genoa as well, and they sent out the notice and the survey. And as Harry indicated, there was only six out of the 14 that responded.
Right.
Three were in favor, three were against. The municipal code requires it. You have a majority in favor of establishing that district. But if you want us to go ahead and reach out to the residents on Genoa, we can do that and see if we can get a full response.
I mean, the more, the more people you engage, I think, the better at the end of the day. So I know it's a little time, but a little bit of time and work on staff.
My only concern with that, James, we go to the next block, to the next block, next block. And I think until people come talk to us, us going out and being proactive, we might as well just notify the whole city.
Oh, no.
Yeah, I'm more concerned about that.
I think we're, we're talking two different things. I'm talking about the, not just their neighborhood, I'm talking about the process itself. Moving forward, when we go, have to go through this process, part of the process should include a community engagement meeting. That's what I'm saying. That, that's all. I'm not saying anything past that.
I'd be more concerned about staff time and the amount of funding that we have. We don't have. So we got to be real careful when we start doing these community meetings, because it's staff time and it costs a lot of money to me. I think what they did was right. Carrie comes in and he expresses his concerns, he was notified, and I think he got a different opinion maybe now. Potentially, Carrie, you got a little different opinion potentially about what we're doing, correct?
Yes.
See, so I think by coming in, Carrie's going to be able to go back to his community and say, hey, folks, this is something we need to consider, or we're going to be overrun. And I think that's, that's going to happen. I think the next street over, it's going to happen. So I think they're, but just by cars moving, we're going to have more people come in.
And then you have Montrose next.
Right, Montrose next.
Are we going to send something out to Montrose, too? Might as well.
What I'm, what I'm referring to is, we're both saying the same thing.
Right.
At the end of the day, I'm just asking about the process itself as, when we are, because we don't do this every day. This was, this was brought up by the resident, and I'm thinking when a resident engages the city saying, hey, we want to do this, then the city, as part of what we do, should include a meeting with those residents that would be impacted, have a meeting, say, hey, we're going to have it on this day. If you show up, you show up. If you show up, you get more information than if you just got it in the letter. You get your questions answered.
Councilmember Reitling, so staff followed the municipal code, which is to send a notice and a, and a survey. So they followed what the municipal code requires?
Absolutely, and I, maybe I'm not saying it correctly. I understand that. I'm saying, adding, adding, for future reference, could we possibly add a step, just a simple step, to engage the residents in a meeting? Because I'm asking that for my area as well. We're, as you know, we're engaging because of the development at the Strawberry Field. We sent out a meeting and notice, and, and we didn't get that many people that participated. So in my mind, had we had a meeting first, like I actually was hoping we did, but we didn't. We just went out with the meeting, and I'm going, well, that kind of, you know, since we put the ballots out for them to vote, then we didn't have the opportunity for them to fully hear what the problem is and understand the impact of what that development is going to be doing once it's built. So that's what I'm getting at. And I know these are?
I wouldn't use the Strawberry one as a, as a good example, because the Strawberry one was a by right.
No, I'm not, I'm not talking about parking, I'm talking about the impacts from the parking. So, again, I'm just talking about the process, adding?
Another step?
That's all I was saying, is if, when, when the residents, we don't do this every day, when a resident comes to the mic and says, hey, we're having a problem with parking, step one should be, okay, let's have a meeting about it. That's all I'm asking. But I moved, I moved to, I moved the item.
Okay, got a motion to approve the item. And another thing I would also encourage is Carlos's district.
I was just telling him that.
Yeah, and I think it's important that Carlos is made aware of it, so that he, if he needs to go out and, Carlos wants to have a meeting with the residents, which I think is the first step to his district, and I think that's would work even better.
That's what I'm talking about.
And then, you know, sending staff out to have a meeting, you know, Carlos comes in and reports to city manager, the city manager then makes those necessary steps. Okay? So, Harry, now we got a motion to approve that. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
All right, second from Councilmember Garcia. All right, Ms. Garrett, you can, you can put your trash cans out hopefully very soon, and you'll be able to get your mail. Okay, thank you. All right, pass her now. So let's move on now to council committee reports. Any Councilmember Garcia? Anything? Councilmember, no reports for meetings? Anybody have any committee reports?
Uh-uh.
Nope, no committees? All right, move on now to our business item. Madam Clerk?
Item 13A is fiscal year 2025-26 first quarter budget review and proposed budget adjustments presented by our Assistant City Manager, Stephen Parker.
These are all receiving file, right? That's it?
No, there is action required, but it can be done in one vote.
Okay. I thought it was receiving file. Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. What's become a recent tradition of ours, the first quarter budget update is the first time we get to take a look, a holistic look at the budget that was adopted for the year. And as inevitably occurs, there are changes that are necessary throughout the process. Stacy Sullivan, our finance manager, will be conducting our presentation on the first quarter budget update for today.
Stacy Sullivan, Finance Manager. The item before you today is the fiscal year 25-26 quarter one budget review. The city adopted the 25-26 mid-cycle budget in June with a net positive position of $180,000. Since then, there have been revised revenue projections and proposed expenditure increases for revenue. The revised revenue projections total approximately $100,000, as detailed on this slide and in the staff report. Due to continued volatility in the economy, staff will continue to monitor sales tax revenue and include any recommended adjustments as part of the mid-year budget review that will be here in March. The departments have provided proposed expenditure increases. For the general fund, the primary increases are for self-funded liability, community services, and a transfer out for building maintenance. For IT, the internal service fund, the working capital is going to be approximately $2.9 million after the appropriation here of $186,000. For PEG funding, the balance after the $50,000 appropriation will be approximately $600,000. For self-funded liability, the working capital will be approximately $4.4 million after the appropriation of approximately $82,000. And the UAL, working capital, will be approximately $1.2 million after the $505,000 appropriation. There's some additional expenditure increases for the enterprise funds as well, and sewer utility. So the general fund net position will decrease, but still have a positive $82,000. There are also a few CIP adjustments that are recommended, specifically the reassignment of expenditures from the water fund to the water bond fund. So this will continue to focus on drawing down the bond funds in a timely manner. There are four recommended personnel changes in the police and public works departments. The park ranger positions, which have been challenging to keep filled, will be frozen, and the existing budget will be used towards offsetting the cost for the reclassification of a police corporal to a police lieutenant position. There's also a reclassification of a crime prevention, community outreach specialist to a communications information specialist, and a reclassification of a budget specialist to a management analyst. The fiscal impact to the general fund as a result of these reclassifications is a savings of approximately $33,000. We also have a couple of prior year adjustments that have been identified. So as part of our year-end process, we've identified a couple of areas where incorrectly charges were being allocated. So for example, in the sewer division, there were costs being allocated to the general fund that should be going to sewer. As a result of that, we did a prior year correction of almost $650,000. Additionally, in the solid waste fund, there was a charge being transferred from solid waste to sewer for an employee who was maintaining the landfill. That employee retired in April of '22, but that charge remained on the books. We found that and have corrected that, which had a net positive position for the solid waste fund. And then there are several recommendations before you today. One is to receive and file the quarter one budget review, approve the proposed budget amendments, approve the appropriation for the self-funded liability, approve an appropriation from the IT fund balance, approve an appropriation from the IT PEG fund balance, approve an appropriation for UAL, approve the prior year fiscal adjustment from, to the general fund, and approve a fire, prior fiscal year adjustment to the solid waste fund. And that ends the presentation, and Stephen and I are available to answer any questions you may have.
Counsel? Oh, I just want to, go ahead, Carlos.
Just really quick, it's more a question regarding the freezing of the park ranger positions. So with, with that being frozen, who, who ultimately is going to be now filling in those gaps with those two? With the park ranger's position being frozen, is, is impact going to take over those, those slots, or how?
They have been, they always have.
That's what I thought, but I just wanted clarification on. Okay, thank you.
Any questions? I want to thank, thank you, Stephen and your team for a great, great, great job there. Appreciate it. It's always good, though, when, you know, Stacy, when you guys do such a great job now and are being recognized again, and that's good that we keep, we're finding things and we're actually have a little bit of extra. Not a whole bunch, but a little bit extra, that's all that matters. That's what matters, and I know that the chief will take care of our parks, always has been, so it's not like it's going to change anything. All right, get a motion? Go ahead.
This just popped in my mind, I'm sorry, you're not even going to be probably prepared for this, but you know how we're trending conservatively for sales tax and that we're taking a dip? And so our last report was trending down. Do you have anything to share on where we are now mid-year with that, with, the second quarter report is posted on the city website, so I've read that, of that status of where we are? Are we planning projections of ending this year with a downward slope? And a lot of the media outlets are saying, you know, it's going to be probably a tough fourth quarter fiscal ending for shopping. Is there any insight you have that you want to lend on that, or?
There's not a lot right now. The revenue coming in is as projected, which was a reduction from the original projection as a part of the two-year budget. The third quarter was actually pretty solid, but I agree, depending on fourth quarter and how that goes, and again, just the continued economic uncertainty, right? The government's been shut down, there's been huge impacts, how does the holidays go, which is when? Which is when a number of the businesses receive a majority of their revenue as well as we do. So we're keeping an eye on that and working with our consultants, HDL, to monitor. And we're hoping, obviously, by the time we bring the mid-year budget update in March, we'll have a much better idea of where we've ended the calendar year '25 and can determine if we need to make any further adjustments. Those could also be offset by increased revenue in other areas such as property tax, interest income, other, other things that could help to offset that. So we're being conservative, but a little optimistic.
True, and there's not much of an, you know, $82,000. You see how close those expenditures are to revenue. So we're really definitely riding that line. But I do understand and appreciate it's a moving target at all times. Thank you for that.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, council member. All right, move on now to council communication. Oh, we got a motion.
Move to approve.
So move by council member, Rightling, second by Mayor Protem Zunig. Let's vote. That passed unanimously. We'll move on now to council communications. Council member Garcia, you may go first.
Thank you, Mayor. This weekend, I want to thank Terry and everybody over at the chamber. It was an awesome tour of foothills. My first one attending, got to hang around with the mayor for a little bit there, too. So good times for sure. Tomorrow, we pause to honor the brave men, excuse me. Tomorrow, we pause to honor the brave men and women who have served our country with courage, sacrifice, and unwavering dedication. Their commitment to protecting our freedoms remind us of what truly matters: unity, service, and gratitude. So to every veteran in Upland and beyond, thank you for your service, your strength, and your example. Continue to inspire us every day. And if you're a business or resident who would like to show your support this month, I still have Veterans Month yard signs that are still available. Let's fill our city with pride as we recognize those have given so much for all of us. And if you see something, folks, say something. Thank you.
Thank you. Council member Mous.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I also want to touch on Tour de Foothills, and Terry's still here. Thanks for hanging in with us. The chamber always does a great job. That is a many-moving part, very huge event that brings a lot of notoriety to our city. My husband rides in it every year. He did the metric, he rode 62 miles, had a great time. The rest stops were superb. He had, just all of the riders and, and, you know, even if you get a flat, they, they can, they can fix and help them out. So it's a great way and a safer way for the riders to be out on the roads. So really applaud and appreciate you for that. And then the Upland Police Department open house is this Saturday. Hoping I get to see a lot of residents out there. It's always a great time. It's from 10 to 2 PM. And I really encourage that if you haven't attended that, that you do so. It's the only time that it's ever really open in the manner that it is. And I do believe you still get to go up to the chief's office if I'm not mistaken. Yep, yep, he's nodding his head. So that's great. And then, you know, there's a lot of giving that needs to be done this holiday season, probably more so than in past seasons. There's opportunities with businesses like Brewster's, who will give you a free ice cream if you bring in a turkey. We're going to have different nonprofits trying to fulfill the gifts of Thanksgiving dinner for all families. Family Foothill Shelter's always been the pioneer with that, but also the Pacific Community Center. So if you find it in your heart and in your wallet, and maybe forego a material good for yourself, that you could always be out there to support. All the toy drives that are coming up and the turkey drives and, and just kind of get in tune to all of the nonprofits that support our city on a 12-month basis. This is the time to turn around and support them. Thank you for the time. I hope everyone has a great night.
All right, council member Rightling.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to invite everyone to CERT's fundraiser, which is going to be this Tuesday, tomorrow, I'm sorry. No, not tomorrow, November 18th, apologize. November 18th, from 10 AM to 8 PM at Sour Dough and Company up in the colonies. Please stop by, a portion of the proceeds, go to support CERT. I'd like to welcome Better Buzz Coffee to Upland. Better Buzz opened their doors last Thursday and are located at 1317 East Foothill Boulevard, across from the Red Hill Plaza. Also, I wanted to take a moment to recognize the incredible success of, of last Saturday's Upland Chamber's annual Tour de Foothills bike ride. This year, they had 1,300 riders register, including more than 300 veterans and active military, over 50 paracyclists, and even a para Olympic athlete, Jenna Rollman. The family ride also brought an additional 150 riders, making it a total of 1,500 people in attendance overall. I believe that's the highest turnout you've had yet. So congratulations there. Also want to thank the chamber for organizing the event and for all of the great sponsors that they had this year. Shout out to Sprouts, Amazon Fresh, Walmart, King's Brewery, Pacific Wine Merchants, The Taco Man, and many others who made the day possible. Mayor Veltone and his wife. And of course, a special thanks to the 14 local breweries that joined in at the finish line celebration. The Tours de Foothills, once again, showed the best of Upland, our community, our small businesses, and our pride in supporting one another. Thank you very much, Terry. And as the chief said earlier today, today, we celebrate the 250th birthday of the United States Marine Corps. Founded on November 10th, 1775, the Marine Corps was established by the Second Continental Congress to serve as an elite fighting force aboard naval ships. Since that day, Marines have upheld a proud legacy of honor, courage, and commitment, defending freedom around the world and exemplifying the highest traditions of military service. As we honor this historic milestone, let's also remember to come together tomorrow at Veterans, for Veterans Day, at 11 AM here in the Veterans Plaza in Upland, to pay tribute to all those who served our nation in uniform. Thank you.
Council member, Mayor Protem.
I too like to congratulate the chamber on a well-done event. I would also like to congratulate HDU on a very well-done Dia de los Muertos event. I know it was on November 1st, but we haven't been here since before that. Linda, the HDU, you guys exceeded my expectations. The event was amazing. For those of you that didn't make it, you missed out on a really good event. I didn't think it was going to be that packed. Everybody did really good. A lot of those stores were, did really good. My store did more than we do at Lemon Festival. So thank you. Looking forward to next year. I know it's going to be bigger and better. Congratulations. That's all I have.
Yeah, I also want to thank HDU for the Dia de los Muertos. That was really nice. It was excellent. I was down there for quite a while. I actually said to Linda, how about the next one? She goes, Bill, come on. I talked to her about, I want to do a barbecue competition and a beer competition and a car competition. And she just looked at me and goes, hey. So, oh, by the way, Linda, President, we're going to, we're going to probably figure a way to do that, aren't we? Thank you, there you go. She's great. And also I want to thank the chamber. What an event this weekend. Oh, my gosh. It, there was a lot of people. I was, I kept watching them go by and go by from the starting line. And it was really well, beautiful weather that day. And to see CERT out there doing what they do, again, CERT always there, helping out. And our police department got a lot of, a lot of kudos from the, from the, from the participants and the residents, just to see the three of them out there and the vehicles and coming up Euclid Avenue with all the lights synchronized that you could, so that the event could happen. Those are the kind of things that I think that we, some of our residents really don't know about, that don't participate and maybe don't come down and see what goes on. That was three weekends in a row that we had special events in our downtown. And that really has changed the, just the landscape down there. And I know that people have reached out to me about the parks going in, the urban plaza. And Bob, that's coming along all right. So we know that's going to happen. And I know that Tom's wife has reached out to me numerous times. It's coming, it's coming, it's coming. So again, city staff puts a lot of time in. The public works guys, I want to thank them. They were down there early Saturday morning. So we went up and I bought them coffee and had a little chat with them to keep the spirits up on the demon. So they had a good time. They were very, spoke very highly of leadership that we have now. And that's all important, because when we're out working with our residents and we're talking to them about what we're accomplishing in our city and how this council works together to, you know, come up with solutions and staff's input. Staff comes to us with, you know, what we should be looking at, what's important in our community, and how we can get it done. And guess what? Things are happening. So our downtown's going to have a revitalization, and it's already going. And we're looking around the city and other areas of where we can make some improvements. Foothill Boulevard started, folks, so you know that's going to happen. And so just be careful on Foothill Boulevard for the next, about a year, Mike? Is it? About a year. So just be real careful as you're going out Foothill Boulevard on the west side of Upland. You're going to see a lot of construction going on. It's already started. So just be aware that we're doing everything we can as a team, as Team Upland, to make Upland a better place to call home. Thank you all. City manager?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
All right. Hearing that, nothing left. We are going to be adjourned to the next regularly scheduled city council meeting. It will be Monday, November 24th. We are adjourned.